Is it centimeters with the decimal in this area? Is it?
Yeah.
I think it's just a random number generator.
It seems like that.
See, I knew if I waited.
She's an Apple time.
She is. She's an Apple time. Yeah, I said.
Atomic time.
Apple time.
Yes.
Welcome, everybody, before we start. It's nice to see everybody here. I bet they're here for one particular reason, but that's okay.
One very good reason.
Anytime. All right. Please call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Franklin?
Here.
Ms. French?
Here.
Mr. Pritherich?
Here.
Ms. Ragoo?
Here.
Mr. Bracken?
Here.
Mayor Snively?
I'm here, and at this time, we'll have a pledge of allegiance. If you'd like to join us, you're welcome to.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any changes? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Agenda's approved. We'll move to public participation, and we begin with the proclamation. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life to advancing equality, social justice, and opportunity for all, and challenged all Americans to participate in the never-ending work of building a more perfect union. And whereas Dr. King's teachings can continue to guide and inspire us in addressing challenges in our communities, and the King Holiday and Service Act enacted in 1994 designated the King Holiday as a national day of volunteer service. And whereas the Universal Declaration of Human Rights empowers us all, the principles enshrined in the Declaration are as relevant today as they were in 1948. And whereas since 1994, millions of Americans have been inspired by the life and work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. to serve their neighbors and communities on the King Holiday. And whereas serving on the King Holiday is an appropriate way to honor Dr. King, meet local and national needs, bring our citizens together, and strengthen our communities and our nation. And whereas the King Day of Service is the only federal holiday commemorated as a national day of service and offers an opportunity for Americans to give back to their communities and make an ongoing commitment to service today and throughout the year. Now, therefore, I, William B. Snively, Mayor of the City of Oxford, Ohio, hereby proclaim January 20th, 2025, to be Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day 2025 in the City of Oxford and encourage all Oxford residents to remember, celebrate, and pay tribute to the life and works of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And we have the Vice President of the local NAACP branch who will be here to accept it. Former counselor, former vice mayor, former current awesome person, Vanessa. Congratulations.
Thank you.
To the NAACP. And would you like to say if you were sure?
Yes.
Yeah, we did want to.
You know what?
Let's use the backdrop.
Which backdrop?
Wow. Y'all fellated since I was up here last night.
Oh, yes. Well, here, take it with you.
All right.
I can read it.
That's okay. He can have it. He'll give it back. Good evening.
Good evening.
And thank you very much for the proclamation. I'm here representing the Oxford NAACP, and we will have our community observance on Monday, January 20th, at the Oxford Community Arts Center. The viewing of the art entries is at 10:00 a.m., and the program will be at 10:30, and our speaker is Tara Trueblood. So we're inviting everybody in the community to please come out and support the event. Our theme this year is meaningful dialogue across differences, and that's very relevant today. We've got the art gallery, which we do every year. We're asking children from kindergarten through high school to submit artwork that pertains to the themes. Also, community members can submit artwork, and we're encouraging adults in the community to also submit artwork. You can drop it off at any of the school offices, and we can pick it up from there. If you have any questions about that, I want to make sure I give you the right email address for the NAACP, because I get it backwards. I do, and I pulled it up, and it's on one of these openings. But you can definitely hit us up by email at... I got too many emails. NAACP Oxford, Ohio, at gmail dot com. If you have questions about it, NAACP Oxford, Ohio, at gmail dot com. So we're encouraging all the community to come out and support this event on Martin Luther King Day, and remember, it's a day of service. So in addition to coming and sharing with us, we also ask that you go out and do something to serve in the community, to help others in the community, to reach out and make a difference. We usually go out to Tops and do something there, and we move the time up earlier in the day. So if people want to see what else is coming on TV later that day, they can watch it if they so choose, and y'all know what that is. I ain't got to talk about that. But we definitely want the community to come out and support it through your artwork, through your presence, through the dialogue that's going to happen that day. We've been doing this for a number of years, and the NAACP is just honored to take the lead in doing this, and the city has always partnered with us, and we appreciate the city being a part of this celebration and being a part of the sponsorship of it. So thank you again.
Thank you, Reverend.
I can't stay, but I just want to say thank you. I'll come back and raise your meetings again. I'm just tied up right now. But thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Happy New Year.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is something that we look forward to every year, and that is the swearing-in of a new officer in the police department, and I would recognize Chief Jones to conduct the swearing-in.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to bring up Wade Estes to the podium here. So Wade, Wade recently graduated from the Butler Tech Police Academy and took his state test, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, and is now starting his FTO program. So he's about to embark on a journey with his field training officer for the next, I don't know, 16 weeks maybe, and learn how to be a police officer in Oxford. So Wade, I'll tell you a little bit about Wade. He's originally, he's from Brookville, Indiana, but he spent the last few years attending college down at Northern Kentucky University, where he'll soon graduate with his degree in criminal justice. He held many leadership positions while there. He was president of his fraternity. He served on student government. We were just impressed with his ability to balance his activities, his work, and his schooling at the same time. So we're really looking forward to seeing Wade get started. And he's joining us tonight is his mom and dad, Mike and Barbara. Hope I got that right. I didn't have him in front of me. And then several other members of his family, his sister, his girlfriend, and several other folks that are here with him. So with that, I would like to ask Ben Mazur, our city attorney, to come up to do the swearing-in.
If you'll raise your right hand or repeat after me, please. I, Wade G. Estes.
I, Wade G. Estes.
solemnly swear or affirm.
solemnly swear or affirm.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and of the state of Ohio.
and of the state of Ohio.
and will obey the laws thereof.
and will obey the laws thereof.
and that I will, in all respects.
and that I will, in all respects.
uphold and enforce the provisions of the Charter.
uphold and enforce the provisions of the Charter.
and the ordinances of the City of Oxford.
and the ordinances of the City of Oxford.
and will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police officer.
and will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police officer.
upon which I am about to enter.
upon which I am about to enter.
I pledge to enforce the laws of the City of Oxford.
I pledge to enforce the laws of the City of Oxford.
and of the state of Ohio.
and of the state of Ohio.
impartially and with integrity.
impartially and with integrity.
never using my authority for personal or private motives.
never using my authority for personal or private motives.
but applying the law fairly and equally to all persons.
but applying the law fairly and equally to all persons.
solely in the interest of the public peace, safety, and welfare.
solely in the interest of the public peace, safety, and welfare.
and I further pledge to so conduct myself.
and I further pledge to so conduct myself.
as to bring credit to the police division of the City of Oxford at all times.
as to bring credit to the police division of the City of Oxford at all times.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Officer Wade. We need to sign, please. I know your family is very proud of you. We're so glad you were here to join us.
And I'm going to ask his father, Mike, to come up to do the badge-pinning ceremony. All right. So Wade, so, you know, this badge, you know, represents that oath that he just took, and it's a shield to go over his heart, and we'll ask his father to pin that badge on. Here's your other two badges. And I know we trust that Wade's always going to bring that credit to the police agency. He's going to learn from his FTOs, and he's already done well at the academy. So one important thing, and I'm going to embarrass him here, that I forgot to mention in his bio, most important thing is, like myself, he's a fellow Cleveland Browns fan in a sea of Cincinnati.
We will forgive you. We forgive you then.
But anyway, Wade, would you like to say anything?
Sir, just want to thank the City of Oxford for giving me the opportunity to be an officer here. I hope to do some good things here, help out the community. I want to thank my parents, my friends, and my family for coming here. Appreciate it. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Wade. You join an excellent police department, and we look forward to great things from you. Thank you, Wade. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Now go celebrate. Do we have somebody from the farmer's market? Is there someone here representing the farmer's market?
Yes.
Great. We're so glad to have you, because that's the next item, is the Oxford Farmer's Market Annual Report. Welcome.
Hi. Thank you so much for allowing me to come this month. I did a little mess up last month.
That's all right.
Also, no song and no dance. The era of Larry's craziness is over. So I apologize to anyone who loved that, but that's gone. So hello, everyone, and thank you so much for having me. I need to start by apologizing for missing last month's meeting. I was blissfully unaware that I had the wrong night for the meeting and was at the Festival of Lights with my family. It wasn't until the following day when I got online to verify if the meeting was at 7:00 or 7:30 that I realized I had just missed the meeting entirely. I proceeded to go on this, like, apology tour, calling, like, everyone to apologize. I was like, oh, be thinking about this for the next five years of my life, but it's fine.
It's not a problem.
As most of you don't know me, you'll have to take my word when I say that missing meetings isn't something I do regularly. However, I appreciate that you moved forward and granted the permits for 2025. Anyway, my name is Madison Wetzel, and I am the new market manager. I have just completed my first year in the role, and I'm so grateful for the time I have spent. My motto for this year was to observe and absorb everything around me, to learn the ropes and make relationships with everyone, and of course, try to fill the big footsteps that were before me. This year, we had around 50 to 60 vendors join us throughout the year. Some would come every single week loyally. Some would just come a couple of times throughout the year. We welcome plenty of new artisan vendors and even have accepted a new application for a farmer to start vending in the spring, which is exciting, because there aren't many farmers that want to join us that often. So we're really excited about that. With the help of a council member for the market, we have partially finished revamping the vendor applications, policies, and bylaws. Those should be finished entirely by the end of this month. Those are all accessible on our website now, which I'm very excited about. You can fill them in on PDF, unlike having to print them and fill them out. We continue to welcome Miami student organizations and had the most amazing day, welcoming over 600 freshmen to the market on their first weekend in town. We gave cider, no, no, yeah, yeah, cider and apples to the freshmen. Miami really pushed us as like a welcome weekend event. It was so fun. The freshmen are so easy to spot, and we just, like, attacked all of them, and they were like, "How do you know I'm a freshman?" And I was like, "I don't know." It was such a fun day. Our Sprouts program blossomed this year. We had a wonderful Miami student who just adored the program and did amazing activities every single weekend. We also brought back farm visits, which was a wonderful and educational element for all of us. We also offered a voucher program through Produce Perks, which allowed folks 200% below the poverty level to access $140 worth of fruits and vegetable vouchers. If you don't know, probably most of you don't, I'm a social worker by daytime, and so that program was something that I adored. And it brought a lot of, like, we had a couple people from Ross and someone from Hamilton come up to our market because of the voucher program and learned that they also could use their food stamps. So we saw, I would want to see so much more, but we did see a great deal of growth amongst the food stamp use at the market this year, which personally, I'm very excited about. Jennifer Bain also continues to successfully run the winter market. I stepped back for that, because I'm not a cold-weather gal. Speaking of winter, a personal goal of mine is to revamp the website, where you will hopefully find an accurate vendor list with good-quality photos. James Bingham's sister, if you know James, his sister takes beautiful photos. We're going to utilize her photos for the website, hopefully, and also to make the Market Minute a little bit fancier and better. We're Matt. As we look forward to this coming summer, we're working on ways to continue to revamp the ambiance of the market as well as work on advertising in new and different ways. I hope to visit markets around Ohio and Michigan this coming summer to assist with ideas for these endeavors. Starting this year, we also will require an initial visit to farms or bakeries before officially accepting vendors into the market. It's important to me to be able to stand by every product in the market, and so that will ensure that I can. So we, like this farmer that just applied, we utilized that process with him. Jennifer went out before we accepted his application. There were actually some things that were concerning. He agreed to change those things. He gets accepted into the market pending our revisit once he corrects those things, and so I'm really excited about that. I want to be able to stand by everything that we have at the market and ensure that we're upholding the value of make it, bake it, grow it. All in all, we had a wonderful year. With the knowledge I take from 2024, I'm excited to move into 2025 with what will hopefully be an even better market. I want to ensure the quality and experience for the weekly visitors and shoppers, while also gently pulling folks from further and further out to visit what I think is the greatest market around. Thank you. Any questions or anything?
Thank you. Are there any questions? We're glad you're here.
Thank you so much.
All right. Our next item is a notice to legislative authority. Doug, you want to just describe that for us?
Sure. This is for the issuance of a new C1 and C2 license for Oxford Smoke Time Inc., located at 109 West High Street. And we received a notice to legislative authority from the Division of Liquor Control regarding the potential issuance of this, and we have an opportunity, if we so choose, to request a hearing or not request a hearing.
Okay. Thank you very much. And which, I forget now which license it is. I read it.
Sure. These are, C1 is carryout for beer.
Okay.
And C2 is carryout for wine and mixed beverages.
Okay. Thank you very much. I would entertain a motion to receive without comment.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Done, and we'll move now to public comments. And at this time, we welcome comments from the public on anything which is not on tonight's agenda, or if it's on the consent agenda, this would be the time. And if you have some comments on something that is on the agenda, just wait for it, and then we'll call on you then. But if anyone wants to speak, we give you five minutes, and you just tell us your name and where you live, and we'll listen to you for five minutes. And I see nobody jumping up. I'm going to give them a second to see that it's on the agenda, what they want. If you're talking about deer, it's on the agenda. Okay. Yes, yes, I meant to go to you next.
Thank you, no problem. I just wanted to introduce a Miami student working with me this month, Elena Ziccarelli. She's a Miami student working under the Ohio Public Leader Program. She's going to be working on a Black History and Culture Plan, dedicating all of her time this month, so that's appropriate. And just putting a name with a face, because she'll be interacting with some of the local community groups, and Elena Ziccarelli.
Welcome, Elena.
Thanks. I'm excited to be here. My name is Cecilia. Yeah, I live at One Andrew Worcester Place. I'm excited to work on this project.
Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome. Are there any other public comments at this time? Okay, thank you. We'll move to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do either of the items need to be removed? Hearing none, all those in favor, accepting the consent agenda, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. And it is approved, and we'll move to resolutions. You can read our one resolution.
A resolution extending the existing moratorium on alley development to March 20, 2025, within the City of Oxford, Ohio.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Sam?
All right. We're back. This has been off-and-on discussion for several months, and I know it's probably not something that you're excited to discuss, because the last time this was brought up, there was discussion about not extending a moratorium any further. And just for the general public listening, I know there's a couple Boy Scouts here tonight working on their merit badge, so I'll try not to use too much jargon. But the purpose of the moratorium that was originally put in place was to have a temporary pause on building homes, building houses where there are lots that do not have frontage on a public street. That was put in place back in April of 2024. And there's been several meetings, internal meetings of city staff, there's been a council work session, and city staff asked for that to be extended back in September to January 16th of this month. And that would, the purpose of the moratorium was to allow time for staff to develop some updated policies that would facilitate development of lots that did not have frontage on public streets in a way that would be amenable to all parties, but would not take away the rights of the property owners from developing those lots. There's been some zoning issues with variance requests that if the variances were not approved, then they would result in some very unusual-shaped buildings. And so that's one of the things that we have tried to address. And planning commission met in December and discussed some of these things, made a lot of progress, actually, but it wasn't quite to the point where planning commission was ready to move it on to council. So it actually was tabled to the January meeting, which will be next week. So we're asking for additional time on behalf of Planning Commission to get those in front of council for the typical process, which would be actually until March 20th, without any emergency of any kind, just the typical first and second readings. any emergency of any kind, just the typical first and second readings. So some of the other aspects that have been discussed of, that have been challenges is getting utility and emergency vehicles into those areas that are essentially houses behind houses. And then staff findings have been that stormwater drainage is a major issue that we think can be worked through as well. Those would not be going through the zoning text amendment process, but would be coming separately. And so those are the different topics. So it's kind of on behalf of all departments, not just zoning. So, and Planning Commission recommendation for an extension as well. March 20th would allow for a February 4th first reading of council and then a second reading potentially, and then a 30-day effective date for any updating of ordinances.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to, excuse me, who would like to address this? Okay. Counselors, questions or comments?
Just provide an update from the Planning Commission that Zach Moore and Sam have been working really hard. And we had a work session that also engaged some of the property owners, so they had an opportunity to communicate their thoughts about, and I think it was just consensus, we're moving in the right direction and it's almost there. And so there was some hesitation, like, should we just move this forward? But it's better to do it right the first time, even if that means a slight delay. So we were a little hesitant about asking to extend the moratorium, but we're just that close. So it's a matter of a couple of months and we should be, have a really good ordinance that would allow people to move forward, but also address a lot of the concerns that we've heard.
Because it is a recommendation of the Planning Commission, whom I respect quite a bit, I will vote to approve this. But I, I remain skeptical, but I remain now more optimistic that you will have something before us shortly. Thank you, David. Anyone else?
I looked at the September 17th meeting to remember what was said. And I think several of us were not excited about extending this at all. Are the people who were against it the first time not here tonight because they had their say at a planning meeting? I mean, when you said that several of the property owners have been part of the conversation, do they include some of the people who were concerned about the extension to begin with?
Yeah, they're, one of the main, one of the main people has been local architect Scott Webb, who has kind of represented a couple different property owners. Obviously, none of them are here tonight, but he did speak at the Planning Commission meeting and spoke positively about the direction it was moving. There was some hesitation as well. You know, it's not done until it's done, but I think he, I don't know if he was necessarily representing those property owners, but a lot of times he does act on behalf of them in the process of submitting applications for review. So I think his voice was heard by the Planning Commission. I don't know why they're not necessarily here tonight, but.
Well, also weather and holidays perhaps, but.
Well, and he'll be here, I'm sure, when we have something to vote on.
But the discussion of extending it was, the moratorium was being discussed during the Planning Commission meeting, so that would not necessarily be a surprise.
Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Resolution is adopted. It is the last time that we will extend this. I know we did say that before, but we mean it this time. All right. Ordinances, first readings. We have no first readings and so we will move to our one second reading.
An ordinance correcting the Calico Acres subdivision plat to affirm the name Jeffrey Drive for certain public streets therein.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Sam?
No changes on the street name clarification.
Okay. Thank you very much. It seems to be pretty simple. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay. Council, any discussion? Are you okay with it?
For the sake of our Boy Scout, it was one of those, it's those little technical things that cities deal with, of how you name and number a street can matter to people in terms of whether they get deliveries properly or they go to their neighbors. And so those little oversights, I think that sometimes we don't always appreciate the detail orientation that a city has to have just for it to function, for getting your packages. So it turns out that at some point in time, there was kind of a misnumbering or naming that caused confusion and we're just cleaning that up.
Everybody ready? Call the roll.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Petheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Snadley?
Yes. The ordinance is adopted and we will move to item eight, which is discussion and update on the city's deer management program.
Okay. PowerPoint here. This item is at the request of Councilor Petheridge, who asked that we give an update on our deer management program for the 24, 25 year. And I put a picture in. I think we're all used to seeing deer in our backyard, but I don't know the name of this one, but very cute deer.
Bambi, I think.
Okay. Anyway, so like I said, I put together this PowerPoint to address some of the questions that Councilor Petheridge has asked that we address. This is the history of the program. It was established in 2009 by resolution. It authorized the city manager to implement a deer management program, to create rules and regulations for obtaining a deer hunting permit, how we issue those permits, and how individuals meet the qualifications to hunt. As you know, it allows hunting with bow and arrow from tree stands on large tracts of land, minimum of five acres within the city, and it requires an application to and permission from the city manager. As you know, David Tree Levin, our environmental specialist, administers this program and he's done a wonderful job with it. We follow the state of Ohio hunting laws and regulations and we administer a proficiency test to the hunters. Safety is of utmost importance to us. So the deer management program for 24, 25 with bow and arrow in our region started in September 28th and will end February 2nd, which is a Sunday. The bag limit was increased to three. It was two last year. And of course, this is the 16th year for our program. Deer are donated to the Community Meal Center in Hamilton. The Community Meal Center provides meals to needy individuals. It's now only one day a week on Friday. The processing cost for the donated deer is paid for by the CMC with a grant from the state of Ohio. And so our goal has always been to restore the natural balance in our ecosystem and not to eliminate whitetail deer. There's no cost to the city except for the time that David Tree Levin takes to manage this program. Program changes for the 24, that should be 24, 25 year. The city divided the hunting season into three assigned hunting periods, and this is similar to what Miami University is doing with their program, and I believe their program is in its third year. This increased the total number of deer taken in the city from the previous year, and I'll get to that soon. We also explored a police deer calling program, and this would utilize the Butler County Regional SWAT team members, which would be separate from our deer management program and require a special nuisance permit from the State of Ohio Department of Natural Resources. Deer would have been taken by rifle with a muzzle in sight instead of bow and arrow. There would have been additional costs for this program, and that cost was estimated to be $28,000. So I did not recommend that to council, not only for the cost, but also for the concern about safety. Deer harvested in 2000, the period 2009 to 2024, we've harvested a total of 153 deer during that time period. That's a 15-year time period, so we've averaged 10.2 deer harvested per year. We've had a high of 25 in the 2012, 2013 season, and that was primarily because we were on the Lily Pond or Lily Farm property, which is out off 73. As you know, we had a low of only four deer taken in '23 and '24, but I'm happy to say that thus far this year, and the hunting season is not over, we've taken nine deer. David asked about the deer vehicle collisions, and the police chief provided this information to me. You can see that we've had six thus far this year, 12 in 2023, four in 2022, and 11 in 2021. And we also show the deer collisions in the township and the combined total. This is a poor map, isn't it? Anyway, they're scattered throughout the city, primarily on the periphery and out in the township where the deer vehicle collisions are. Our options, and this is pretty much what we went through when we did the program in 2009. Obviously, you could do nothing and allow nature to take its course. We decided not to do that. We've also recommended that there are alternate plantings. And if you go on, for example, the Cincinnati Zoo site, they have a list of deer resistant landscape plants. I mean, for example, I have black-eyed susan in my backyard. They don't eat those. I mean, they're, you know, they do eat my roses. But, you know, there are alternate plantings that you can do. Fencing, many individuals in the city have put up fences, primarily net type fencing, not electric fences, but those are good options. Many homeowners use repellents, and of course, there's an expense to that. We talked about in 2009, a trap and transfer program, but that's not a really successful program and it's very hard on the deer. Where are you going to transfer them to? So on and so forth. We have individuals, it's been shared with me, that feed the deer and that's not a good thing. They have enough stuff to eat without providing additional food for them. Contraceptives, in 2009, we talked about that, but that's not authorized by the state of Ohio. There have been trials of using contraceptives in various areas in Ohio. I don't think it's very successful and it's very expensive. Sharpshooters, basically, we talked about that with the, the police program and the cost of that. So what we focused on in 2009 was a program that would use regulated bow hunting on city-owned property and private property. As I said years ago, we were hunting on the Lily Farm property. We also hunt on the golf course property, and that's privately owned. We used to have the private cemetery, which is now owned by the city, but we basically had, at that time, six city-owned properties and two private properties and still about eight. I think part of the issue that we have is we really hunt these regularly and every year. We did at one time go off of the five acre. We were off of, oh geez, what's the name of the street there? White Oak and another street behind White Oak. We had three property owners that had a total of over five acres, and they allowed us to go back there and we hunted there for a while. We had neighbors next to them that were not happy with that, that had children, did not want us hunting with bow and arrow, and we received a lot of emails about that. Property exchanged hands, so we're no longer back in that area. We might consider, you know, putting out a RFP, you know, of interested homeowners that have possibly five acres where we could go in and do some hunting in another area. That might be an option there. And I think that's it as far as my slides go. David had suggested that maybe we should charge the Environmental Commission maybe with, with looking at this. As you can see, I didn't spend a lot of time with this. I put this PowerPoint together to answer David's question. Oh, there was an additional question that David had asked about damage to the street trees. And we did have, I think, three street trees that were damaged on field crest by bucks rubbing their new antlers on the tree bark. And what we're going to do is in the future, when we do our tree planting, we'll add tree guards to those, so that won't happen. So that's all I have. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
So our, our deer who are well acculturated to look both ways before they cross the street, some of them still managed to get hit.
Yes.
Interesting. All right. At this time, we would engage anyone from the public who would like to speak about it, and then we'll have a council discussion. So if you'd like to come forward and give us your name and where you live, and we'll give you five minutes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We're a friendly group.
Good. Thanks. My name is Hank Stevens. I live on Melissa Drive in Oxford. I'm an ecologist at Miami University, and thank you for taking time today. One and a half million is a really big number. That's almost five times the population of Cincinnati. And that's how many people hit deer with their cars each year in the U.S. One and a half million. The cost of the damage averages around $4,000. And the fact that we have too many deer just causes insurance companies to raise everybody's rates. Last, at last count, Ohio ranks fifth in the number of deaths caused by collisions between animals and cars behind Texas, Pennsylvania, Wisconsin, and Michigan. And the more deer we have, the more accidents we'll have. So deer hurt us, but they are also decimating Ohio's forests. Our forests will remain mostly, they'll mostly be wooded, but deer really reduce their vitality and integrity. Overabundant deer eat up native tree seedlings and shrubs and prevent normal forest growth and regeneration. Overabundant deer eat up wildflowers. If you like Trillium and Jackal and Puppa and Virginia Bluebells and lady slipper orchids, well, you should know deer love them even more to eat them for breakfast, lunch, and dinner. And all this damage that deer are doing to our forests even hurts songbirds. Songbirds in North America have declined by about 3 billion, billion with a B, birds since 1970. In eastern forests, woodlands, and grasslands, between 15 and 50% of all bird species are in decline. And research shows that where deer are overabundant, we see fewer songbirds that nest on the ground, in shrubs, and even in trees. These one and a half million car accidents and continued forest decline, these are real. More deer, more accidents. More deer, fewer wildflowers, and fewer songbirds. I'd be happy to provide you with sources of this information, but these realities would be easy to just get used to as normal. But I don't, I don't want to get used to them. As a resident of Oxford, I don't want to get used to them. I don't, I don't want to think the loss of wildflowers and the loss of songbirds is inevitable and we can help reverse those declines. So I urge the city council to consider even more effective efforts to reduce deer abundance to a level that would allow all of nature to survive, to thrive, and for us to be safer in our cars. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Steve Sullivan. I am a naturalist, the director of the museum on campus, and the co-chair of the Natural Areas Committee. Hank and I, Dr. Stevens and I, did not coordinate our discussions at all, but since we're operating off fundamental science and knowledge of natural history, much of what he said is exactly what came to my mind. In fact, if I, if I look back at the notes that I, that I had there, he brought up many of the same anecdotes. And so I want to, first of all, just speak in support of what he has said, also in support of what Doug Elliott said about the, the previous program. I'm thankful that you guys are willing to revisit this. I'm thankful that you've had this program in place. Actually, when I moved into Oxford, I, I heard about the, the potential to hunt in the city, and I thought that was a smart, enlightened opportunity. I am, I am not in a position to take advantage of that, if for no other reason than I haven't made enough time to use a bow in an effective and ethical manner. In that context, I always use rifle. But I love the idea of a combined lot thing. Maybe our neighbors can do that. I hadn't heard of that before, and I think that's a great idea. I also think it's really, really important for the city to enforce a feeding ban on all outside feeding of everything except for birds. There's no reason to be feeding deer, cats, coyotes, raccoons, you name it, with the exception of birds, we should ban outdoor feeding. One of the things that Dr. Stevens noted was, was essentially a shifting baseline, that we move into a place and we sort of understand the place as it is the day we move in. Ohio is historically basically 100% forest with some anthropogenic prairies here and there. At this point, we have about a third of our forest and most of that is, is pretty far east of here. And similarly, we sort of expect deer to be around. We don't need to go into tons of numbers, but, but some of the numbers are, an appropriate number of deer in a stereotypical environment might be six or eight per hectare, and we have somewhere between 15, 20, 25 deer per hectare. And to, to the point of Trillium, I just had this, this picture that I want to bring up. Here in our eastern woodlands, after the snows melt and before the leaves come out on the trees, our forests should look once again like they are covered in. out on the trees, our forests should look once again like they are covered in snow, either white snow or blue snow, because it's Trillium or Bluebells. And so this is a baseline that we should be looking at. If we do not annually in spring see a vegetative snow covering our forests, we have a problem. And that problem is fundamentally the predators of those plants, which are deer. Similarly, as, as Dr. Stevens pointed out, they, these deer eat ground-nesting bird eggs. I've, I've been affiliated with a variety of studies where we record deer actively seeking out ground-nesting bird nests and eating those. These are birds that you consider yours because they nest in your backyard, or they should, and that people in Costa Rica and Brazil also consider theirs, because once they hatch in your yard, they fly down there for this time of year and are those people's backyard birds. And then they fly back here to have their babies, and this becomes a sink. The adults fly back here to have their babies, and they never have babies, and they simply die of old age with no offspring because of the way we manage plant predators and bird predators, which are deer. So finally, I thought I might just share a, a quote from Aldo Leopold, who is often considered the father of North American conservation. And he said in 1949, "Since then, I have lived to see state after state extirpate its wolves. I have watched the face of many a newly wolfless mountain and seen the south-facing slopes wrinkle with a maze of new deer trails. I have seen every edible bush and seedly brow, browse, and seedling browsed, first to anemic desultude and then to death. I have seen every edible tree defoliated to the height of a saddle horn. Hence, we have dust bowls and rivers washing the future into the sea." And this is the shifting baseline that we see since 1949, as we have eliminated the predators on deer and on moving deer around the ecosystem in a healthy way. They have become, in many respects, the apex predators of our ecosystems, and it's incumbent upon us to continue to build on the great work that Oxford has done to, to continue to control this problem that has gotten continuously out of hand.
Super.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very much appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to address this issue before council? Okay, I want to also recognize for the record that a number of people have also written in through email, through the forums that we make available to people online to make comments, and we have read those, and we appreciate their input. I would say that most of them have identified the problem with deer overpopulation, and their frustration with it. Not a whole lot of new suggestions, but that may be something for the Environmental Commission to, to work on. I just wanted to ask one question-
Sure.
-and then counsel. We had talked previously, and I wanted to ensure that it was still the case that if someone gets a permit and takes no deer, that they move it to the bottom of the eligibility list.
I'll have to get with David on that. Didn't get a chance to spend a lot of time with him. I was just happy to hear that we had taken that many deer.
Well, I'm happy that it's increased. I wish it were more, but-
Yeah. But I, I'll talk with him about that. And, you know, I really want to explore this idea of going back to assembling, you know, maybe five acres with three different parcels, you know, if we can get permission of the, of the homeowners. When my family and I lived in New Hampshire, you could hunt on any property in New Hampshire, public or private, unless it was posted, "No hunting." And so there was no acreage. I remember driving my kids home from school and seeing two fellows with orange vests on and rifles going up the road that we lived on, and that was a little unnerving. I'm not a hunter. And, but, you know, each state's a little different. Ohio has some pretty strict regulations that we follow. I know that the property that we lived on, it was about an acre, we, I never saw a deer once in the 14 years we lived there. I saw a bear. I had a moose go through my yard, a porcupine, but never a deer. And so, you know, they've got something right there. And of course, they have some natural predators for the deer there, too. So, you know, whatever ideas we come up with, I mean, our focus is going to be on safety, because there are some homeowners that enjoy seeing the deer. You know, I have a dog. When my dog's out, the deer don't come into the yard, but when she's in the house, she'll start barking because they're in the yard and-
They could certainly come to my house. I'd see them any day.
Yeah, there you go.
I'm sure there are others like that.
Yeah.
Okay, we appreciate that. Counselors, any comments or questions before we refer this? I think where we're headed is to refer this to Environmental Commission.
Well, I just want to say, I want to thank you for the report. I know I kind of put it in a time when people are kind of busy with the holidays, but I think it was really important, to the degree possible. I remember when Councilor Raghu, Vice Mayor Raghu, came on talking about evidence-based, like, I want to see data on this stuff. But I do know anecdotally, like, I don't know what a sustainable deer population is, but that's not what we have. You know, I mean, the herds that I have in my backyard are just astounding, you know? And I'm an environmentalist. I was just struck to see a buck in my backyard, you know? JJ, who couldn't bag one up at his farm, took a picture. But then I saw two bucks, and then there were three. And, and so, to me, that's, I'm not an ecologist, but I feel like we have orders of magnitude more deer than is what a sustainable population. And, and I was, thank you for the report on the deer accidents. You know, I had looked up, and the average cost, what I saw online, the average cost, the insurance cost of a deer car strike in Ohio is $5,000. So partly what I wanted to have some idea of these numbers is, is from that point of view, a culling program that could reduce deer car accidents, is $30,000 for a culling program a lot of money or a little money? When I start thinking about the deer car, the costs of that, I was walking home just the other, in December, and a police officer, they discharged his firearm to put down a deer. The cost that I experienced to, you know, just on my own property, I can extrapolate, if I plant a tree, and if I don't put a cage around it, it will be destroyed. And trees are not cheap. I see my neighbors, and they're gallons and gallons and gallons of deer spray. So, so to me, it's relative that I feel like we have a problem that's a public safety problem. I feel like it's a nuisance problem. I have to clean up deer feces in my backyard so I can just walk around and not come home. There's so much deer feces in my backyard. And, and the ecological, if I, if I plant a native species, if I don't cage it, it will be eaten. And that's all the kind of ecological stuff, but I'm also worried about, you know, the high deer populations, for their own deer sake, the wasting disease is a really serious problem in high-density populations. And we have been blessedly free of Lyme disease here in western Ohio, but not anymore. I think we, there's Lyme disease in Hamilton County, and I think it's been, and, and deer are not direct contributors, but I believe the brown-legged ticks that are, you know, the deer are their primary hosts, and then, and then they pick up the deer from the, from the mice. And so I feel like our situation is, you know, with the deer populations that we have, there are just so many reasons why this is something that let nature take its course is not an answer. And I'm happy to hear that we've harvested nine deer instead of four deer, but I just really wonder whether that's sufficient. And so then, it's a matter of what do we do? And many, many other communities have had programs of varieties of sort that are professional, safe ways of managing the deer population. And it's not cost-free, but I, I just wanted the report because when we look at what the cost of a program is, and it's expensive relative to zero cost, but if I think about the cost that we all bear in damages to our property, I think they probably, again, exceed $30,000 by an order of magnitude. So I, I, whether it's, I think the Environmental Commission's a great place for this. We do have some local, I know Dave Gorchov, who is an expert in deer, he's on vacation, and he couldn't be here tonight, but we have local expertise. You could really, you know, so, so this is where, yeah, I, I think that, I mean, I think the Environmental Commission, I think like a task force that we, you know, either one of those ways, I think either the Environmental Commission, engaging experts, or a task force, and then tell us what the options are, what the pros and cons are, what have other communities done, how much would it cost? But I guess I'm saying I wanted to have this conversation early because I believe we should budget something for some kind of program. We're not exactly sure what it is, but whether it's the resources or a little bit of money, we'll see how well it goes this season, but I'm not optimistic that our current program is up to the, the population probably-
I think more than the, the loss of hostas and having to spray them is the damage that's done to our natural areas and the forests, and that large trees are having a hard time making it and getting to be large trees, and the flowers, as they indicated, which we should be seeing, we're not. I think a general ban on outdoor feeding of animals is something that we should definitely explore. One of my lovely, wonderful neighbors takes it upon herself to feed all the feral cats. And so we have them, and I have video of them going across my yard every night and in, on my deck, and they have decimated the population of songbirds who go to our feeders, because a lot of them go then down to the ground to get what was dropped, and they're being wiped out by the cats. So there are multiple problems here, but I, I do think that the deer are the, perhaps the biggest problem.
Yeah, and the police chief was just sharing with me that we do have a ban on feeding deer, and I think we need to just make the citizens aware of that, and then maybe let us know if you have a neighbor doing it, and we will ask them not to do it, you know?
Well, we should-
Part of the problem, too, is they, you put food out in your bird feeder, and a deer can eat that, too. So it's unintentional feeding them.
I do think that we should make that general to all animals other than birds, so that they're not feeding cats as well.
I believe it is.
Okay, if it is, great. Then we just need to make it a known.
I'll just speak to that. This, this came up years ago, before I was police chief, and they passed, City Council passed an ordinance. It's very difficult to enforce, and we have folks out there feeding cats to trap these cats, to take them and get them. So they're doing a community service, but they're illegally feeding the cats. And then, of course, people are feeding deer. I think Mr. Sullivan was right. Like, I mean, there, there's a lot of other animals that I find nuisance as well. Raccoons, squirrels, they chew my deck. I don't, you know, I mean, I, so, I'm a hunter. I hunt deer, but I have mixed feelings on, on this issue, so I'd be happy to work with Environmental Commission, you know, to go deeper into it. But, yeah, I mean, I have a problem with cats. I'm not sure, in some ways, I may have a problem with songbirds. I, I'm not sure how-
Police chief goes on record.
Well, there's the headline for you, Sean. Police chief on record against songbirds.
My, my, my bigger issue is if we have a culling program on the outskirts of the city, does that effectively solve the issue where we find deer in the subdivisions? And, you know, I, I think we could effectively do this safely, but I don't know that it's going to prevent hostas on, in Councilor Prithorja's yard from being eaten. I live, I live on the 6,400 block of Fairfield Road. There are deer constantly in my yard, and I've learned that I can't save my hostas. I could easily shoot several of those deer, but it's, it's illegal in the city. You shoot a deer, especially with a bow or arrow, you know, where does that deer end up? I, I worry about the negative outcry against the police for doing this, and think, you know, we need to have, you know, wildlife biologists or ecologists that really guide this program and not put this burden on the police. The police are asked to do so much, and coming up, and now suddenly I'm a wildlife manager? That's my pushback on this whole problem. I understand it's a public safety issue, but, you know, I'm a hunter for sport-
You don't want to have to force it.
And, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to bear that burden, so to speak, without a lot of research.
I understand. Thank you very much.
And that's the thought, just that, that we explore a variety of options.
I was going to get to you, but I'll let David-
Yeah, I mean, I think there's no single solution. There's a variety of solutions, and each of them bears analysis.
Can we go back to the map of the accidents? I know it's hard to see with the yellow dots, but just curious if there, it looked like there was a higher frequency of areas where collisions happen?
He's reloading it, but it's-
Okay, sorry. Why you do that? I will quote something that I, that someone in Oxford had taught me about permaculture, which is, the definition is development of agriculture ecosystems intended to be sustainable and self-sufficient. And that he had taught me, he's like, "There's no such thing," and then listen to the rest of the sentence, "there's no such thing as too much of something. There's only too little of something else." So our emphasis on killing so many of these predators have led to, and the destruction of their ecosystem, has led to this very much human-produced problem. So it's not that overpopulation, no one can argue that overpopulation is a problem with cats, which is also a human-made problem, which we introduced. It's not a native species. And then with the deer, but I guess it's just how much are we willing to invest? And so can we quantify what the destruction of not dealing with it is? And I, I feel, I don't know, I would struggle with, I mean, I, people in my family are hunters, and how long do you have to sit and wait, even on the outskirts of town? Like, how many hours are you paying someone to sit there with a gun to kill maybe a deer? That's, so to me, it's like, yes, we need hunters, but just like David already said, it's a multimodal approach of maybe educating people that you don't have to kill every single coyote. Whenever I look at what type of predator in Ohio is a deer, coyotes seem to be the most realistic one that is actually around this area. So an education campaign about maybe not murdering all the animals that come across your land would also be important, so that we can generate a more natural ecosystem, balanced ecosystem. Looking at wildlife crossings, the places that have done that, which I don't know what the cost of that would be. I'm assuming that is a much lower, like, weight burden, so it's, wouldn't be that high of a, the construction. But with that, if we're thinking, I, I see the biggest problem being the loss of, of course, of the ecosystem and the plants, but the loss of human life and the car collisions. And so then the statistics, you have 80% of reduction of collisions with vehicles and wildlife, with wildlife crossings and places where they've instituted that. So that's, I was curious if there was a specific area where that could be instituted, because they are smart, and they, I'm going to guess, they know the city of Oxford is safe. They know that they cannot kill me here. I'm going to be fine. As soon as they're outside the city, they are flighty. They're going to run away. So I also wonder about that, too, because they, I think they know where they are safe, and they are protected. So that also makes me nervous to just put all our eggs into a basket of, like, having someone with a gun sitting there waiting to kill. And then the other thing statistically about, what was this one? About the deer contraception, because as a vet, that sounds really fun to do, because it's basically just a, you basically would need to sedate them and then inject, vaccinate them, and that injection would last for two years. And the studies that they did, they had done it in mainly, like, island communities, and that was highly successful. But then the studies in suburban populations had found that over the course of five years, it reduced the, was it population or the collision? The deer population fell by 50% over five years. So I would definitely consider, I mean, for the males neutering, I'm not sure exactly how the neutering process is for deer. I don't know if, I haven't looked up a study for that, but neutering a male is so much easier than neutering a female or spaying a female, and then a contraception. So I think that there's multimodal things that we can do, and on, with the main emphasis on maybe not being more tolerant of an ecosystem that is more viable and well-rounded. And then I would also say that, because I would definitely worry about this being put all in the Environmental Commission, too, and so some, like, a task force that's made up of experts, that our biologists, ecologists would be really great guiding that way. That we should definitely, the question isn't should we do something? I think it's just, what is the most effective and most cost-effective way to do that?
Amber?
Yeah, I was driving down Chestnut one day back in, it was the end of the fall, and just out of the corner of my eye, saw a young man who was a jogger facing off with a buck and making himself really big. And because the traffic was moving, I was moving, kind of looking at this in my rearview mirror, so I couldn't stop. I've changed my walking route because I was, like, face-to-face, not that close, but with a buck, like, in the middle of the path that I was walking. And sometimes they're flighty, and sometimes they're not. And if you encounter a buck in rutting season or something like that, and they're very protective, as well as the doe in spring, I think quicker than anything, a citizen getting hurt by a buck would make us respond really fast. And we're talking about hostas and other things that are really important, the ecology, but that image is still in my head of that young man who, I guess fortunately, was big and knew what to do, kind of just making himself even bigger- and knew what to do, kind of just making himself even bigger right there on Chestnut close to Locust in the fall. So we really do have to do something. I think it needs to be aggressive. Task forces can work well. That's what we did to find out about a police social service liaison, which we now have. If the right people are on there, it can be more efficient, I think, than the meetings because we don't have to have all the minutes and everything, but something has to be done quickly and aggressively.
Can I just make one more comment? I forgot to mention about the whole feeding cat ban, because that's something that, if you look at humane society or different type of nonprofits, the feeding cat ban can be very challenging, and just like the police chief had mentioned, that there are amazing people in our community that are doing so much, so much to try to reduce the cat population while also trying to help the beings that are there. So it's a very complicated thing. If we were, if the city was really going to engage in trying to deal with the cat overpopulation, it would be to register cats that are being allowed to go outside. That is a very controversial thing, and, but that is something that we need to treat cats the way we treat dogs if we want to deal with the overpopulation. So I would, I... We can feel good about feeding cat, the feeding bans, but that has been shown not to work in other communities, but if we can actually hold people accountable, I don't know how many times on Oxford Talk I have to hear someone say that that was their cat that had no collar and was also not neutered or spayed. How dare you take in my cat? It's like, how does anyone know that's your cat? So it's something that we, if we are going to talk about cats, that is a more evidence-based protocol to look towards on that front.
Okay, so I guess what I would like, it's pretty clear that everyone identifies that the deer overpopulation is a problem. The question is coming up with solutions, and one option is to send it to Environmental Commission. I heard another option, which is to form a task force of people who have expertise in this area, which, to me personally, sounds like a better idea.
Yeah, and I'm thinking that that's where the, I mean, I think it's going to have to engage some of the stakeholders. I mean, I think the police department, whether it ultimately has a responsibility to this program or not, is the public safety person, who's also a hunter, would be a really great resource to a committee like that, you know, including to push back on things. So, yeah, I'm imagining that what would be really good was a task force that has some ecologists who has some...
But not too big.
Yeah, and something relatively lean and mean. Five people who could meet and research some of the best practices in other municipalities. You know, it can include some number of staffers from the city. I mean, Mr. Trilleven's already involved in the program and has experience with it. So I, I mean, we don't need to, but does that sound like, you know?
Does that sound doable, Doug?
Yeah, but I think a comment was made that the task force wouldn't have to keep minutes. They do have to keep minutes. They do have to post.
Well, I think, what I do want to correct, I think what we had was a working group, and I think that there's a difference in that language. So as a working group, I don't think it had to be public in the same way, whatever the word is.
Well, I might differ with you there, but, you know, anytime we create a public body, public needs to know what's going on. And they do that through minutes and posting.
I mean, it's six and a half dozen of the other, it could be a subgroup of the Environmental Commission with these stakeholders, or it could, we could work this out offline, probably.
Yeah, but I think it's doable. I mean, you know, if you have some names, we can put together.
Why don't we talk after the meeting and get some names to Doug of people that we would recommend? And the gentleman who spoke, maybe you have some suggestions as well, and we'll move forward on that basis. We're not really able to make any decision decisions during a discussion item.
And really, partly why the timing was, is getting a sense of what our current program is doing, because the season will end, but thinking about, do some of these have budget implications? And if so, we want to think about that time, and then so we can be ready for '24, '25, '26 with whatever program we have.
Okay.
Thank you for the time and for people and all the comments that came in by email. I didn't share all of them, but most people, like the mayor said, were, "People love the deer, but they also don't love the nuisance."
Okay, I will move then to announcements and communications, and we'll start with Doug Elliott.
I just have one reminder that we have our annual goal-setting retreat next Tuesday, June 14th. We'll start off with lunch, box lunch, and then we'll begin the session at 1:00 P.M. We've got it scheduled from 1:00 to 5:00 at the Elms Hotel.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mike, congratulations to your crews. You're doing a fabulous job with the streets.
It's great to be surrounded by great people.
It is, and you're one of them, but your staff is great, and they, I want them to know that council recognized them.
We'll share that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Chief? Okay. Heidi?
I'm just happy to announce that the City Officer of the Safe and Disease Achievement and Financial Reporting Board had won the plus year, so...
Congratulations.
Thank you. And congratulations to my staff. They've stepped up and evolved.
More of being surrounded by good people, right? Yeah. Anything for you? Chief? Okay, I don't see Casey here. I'll go to Sam.
Nothing further, thank you.
Okay.
Nothing, thank you.
No, okay.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Nothing, okay. Mike?
Not only did they get the streets done in a timely fashion, I saw your crews out today uptown, hand shoveling the crosswalks and salting, you know, the ramps, which I think is great. So again, thanks for everything they did.
Yeah, I would also echo that top-notch work. And speaking of, you know, a lot of snow, if you haven't already signed up for Nixle, a really great resource to be sitting on my couch nice and safely to say, "Oh, level one snow emergency, level two snow emergency."
Stay home.
Stay home. Wasn't planning on leaving anyways. But, yeah, if you haven't already, Nixle's a really great resource. You can get email and text alerts, so anything from, you know, weather-related situations, you get emails about road closures, so just saving some inconvenience on your way, on your way home from work. It's a really great resource. So thank you to our police department for also keeping us informed every step of the way through the weather.
From a public health standpoint, also on topic of cats, I'm sure people have seen that there's more mutterings about the bird flu, and that is something that cats seem to be extremely susceptible to, and it's almost always fatal. And so the cats that we see that are getting exposed to it are the ones that are outdoors. They're hunting wild birds, or if they're pets, they're being fed raw food or unpasteurized milk, also very topical. And so that is something that it's very easy to prevent if you keep your cat indoors. And then if you also are not feeding your animal raw food or unpasteurized milk, that can protect them from it. But if you do see a bird that is not well on the side of the road, don't pick it up with your bare hands. ODNR is saying to call them, and they will help guide you. Either they will come out and deal with it, or they might tell you to throw the bird away. And if you do, you have to, like, wear a glove or take a bag, make sure your hands are protected, wash your hands. This is so infectious, especially to cats, that you can be carrying it on your shoes, on your clothes. If you're, the signs that you can see in your cats would be a lot of ocular and nasal discharge, neurologic signs. And if that is the case, if you call your vet, make sure you tell them what the signs are, and so we need to do very strict protocols so we're not passing it. So something that, there haven't been that many cases, but my guess is that it's been underdiagnosed, and this is something that is zoonotic that can pass to people. So just something to be mindful of.
Thank you very much. Good. Amber?
Happy New Year to everyone. This is our first meeting of the new year, and we're my family's from in Anguilla. People say Happy New Year to each other throughout the entire month of January, so Happy New Year. And just also to say how wonderful it was to see neighbors helping neighbors during the snowstorm. We had friends come over and help us shovel, and I was able to help a neighbor earlier today, so this is just one of the things that makes me really proud to be here in Oxford.
Nothing for me tonight.
Thanks, Jason.
So I just, well, first off, we just went through the holidays, and while I was at home with my family, like many of us were, I heard sirens, I see police cruisers out. So I particularly want to just kind of post-thank all of the essential personnel who weren't with their families because they were staffing the firehouse on Christmas night or New Year's and, yeah, and so that was really... And again, I also really want to acknowledge the snow clearing is just a heroic effort, and, you know, I knew that our streets and maintenance folks did a great job, but water, distribution, wastewater, even custodial staff and your engineering folks leaned into it, so it's a really big team effort. I also wanted to acknowledge, and really, I feel like uptown looks pretty good for the amount of snow that we had. I was proud to see how many of the businesses took the effort. You know, it's like Groundhog Day every time it snows because other people don't. So I walked to council tonight, and 50% of my walk was clear, thanks to Alan Kyger and a snow blower mostly. But, you know, the remainder of it was not, so I had to walk in the street. And we have all the reasons why, you know, people don't shovel, and there's a lot of passing of the buck back and forth, but the end result is, is that if you don't shovel snow in conditions like this, people are forced to walk in the street, and some people walk for transportation. This is particularly going to be the case because when school opens back up again without busing, many kids are walking to school, and if the sidewalks are impassable, they will be in the street. So from that point of view, I made my, I know there's some discussion about how the city can find a way to, to, you know, we've absolved property owners on the trail of the responsibility to clear it, but the snow's still on the trail, and kids will be trying to get to the middle school when it opens up again. And so I think we need to come up with a strategy. My hope is that we can, we can model what I think, I know that certain portions of the trail that are recreational, it makes a lot of good sense for it to just put up a sign and say, "This is recreational, you don't need to use it." But where the trail is the only pedestrian way to something essential like a school, I'm really hoping that we can find a way to model what we would hope, you know, neighbors would do with their sidewalks, which is clear them and make them passable. So I'm thinking particularly those places where it's really the only way, you know, Brookville and Oxford Riley Road, so...
Okay, I want to begin by noting that, once again, our service department is one step ahead of you because the bike trail is already cleared along Oxford Riley Road.
Awesome, thank you so much. I really, really appreciate that.
So they're on top of that. I also have, I have a great deal of property against a sidewalk, and I am physically incapable of doing that length of shoveling in any reasonable point of time. I want to do a shout-out to, go to your point, to one of my neighbors who came by today and took care of it for me. That's just neighbors helping neighbors, and those who like their snow blowers, help out your neighbor, and they appreciate it. If I find out who did do that, there's a bottle of wine or something in their name, certainly coming their way. I want to, again, just thank everyone in the city. I want to wish everyone a Happy New Year, and please be safe out there. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Somebody?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose and stay here. Okay.